Five thirty, so we'll call to order this meeting for Monday, October 28, 2019. Carl, can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Remley?
Here.
Ronane?
Here.
Lunsman?
Here.
Rife?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Bunsonus?
Here.
Olson?
Here.
Rux?
Here.
Mayor Shawnaman?
Here. Please stand with me for the pledge of leeches.
(inaudible) pledge of leeches to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united ground, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
First order of business is to approve last week's minutes for Monday, October 21st. Can I get a motion to do that?
So moved. Take it.
Got a motion from Rux, second from Olson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion does carry. Minutes are accepted. Next, we've got a proclamation, extra mile, oh, extra mile day. Pull that up on the screen. Whereas Aberdeen, South Dakota, is a community which acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community, and when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in a personal effort, volunteerism, and service. Whereas Aberdeen, South Dakota, is a community which encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community. And whereas Aberdeen, South Dakota, is a community which chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. And whereas Aberdeen, South Dakota, acknowledges the mission of Extra Mile America to create 550 extra mile cities in America and is proud to support the Extra Mile Day on November 1st, 2019. Now therefore be it resolved, I, Travis Shawnaman, Mayor of the City of Aberdeen, do hereby proclaim November 1st, 2019, to be Extra Mile Day. I urge each individual in the community to take time on this day to not only go the extra mile in his or her own life, but to also acknowledge all those who are inspirational in efforts and commitments to make their organizations, family, community, country, and world a better place. Great. Now we will move along to the open forum. I see we've got Aaron from the Parks and Rec Department here to talk about the landscape presentation.
Mayor, was there anyone here from the extra mile?
I don't believe so. I kinda gave it a visual scan.
Anyone to add? Thank you.
All right. Thanks for having me. My name's Aaron Keys, city forester with Parks, Rec, and Forestry. Lynn had invited me to come and present on the landscape ordinance, give everybody kind of an overview of how it's going. I did one of these several years back, and so we do have some new people on the council that will kinda go over the requirements, the triggers, picture, all kinds of pretty pictures, and if anybody has questions, feel free to ask, so. All right. Just an overview of the landscape standards. Really, the comprehensive plan that was developed or done in 2004 is really where the landscape ordinance idea came about. Lots of citizen involvement in that process, and some of the top priority things that came out of that were character and appearance of our community. I just grabbed a few things off the plan that lists some of their top priorities that they did include in the comprehensive plan. Some of those were streetscape improvements, more landscaping and screening of parking and storage areas, better managing the appearances of structure and vacant properties, improve the entrances to our community, expand the tree planting program, and then enforce a beautification ordinance. And like I said, there was lots of other things listed there, but some of their top priority of things that they had listed are what I included. So, basically, to improve the look and overall appearance of our community. So 2006 is when the original landscape ordinance went into effect. 2008 is when we incurred our first revision. Really, that original landscape plan was difficult to read, difficult to comprehend, not only for myself, but for the contractors, for the landscape designers, for anybody that was coming into play with it. It was difficult to comprehend and understand. So we decided to simplify it so that, you know, no matter who was reading it would understand what those requirements were gonna be, if you were doing any type of construction in town. So 2008 was when those first set of revisions went into effect. What we did, along with making them simpler to understand, was reduce some of the requirements that were in that original ordinance. So then in 2013, we did another revision of the ordinance. Here again, we did reduce some more of the requirements of the 2008 and 2006. But those 2013 revisions I did list in here, too. One of the requirements that was for boulevard trees in residential areas, we were not only putting new trees in a new construction residential, we were doing it into remodels. I can't remember what the price point was that triggered the ordinance, but basically what we did was eliminate the requirement of boulevard trees except for new construction. So if you build a new house, boulevard trees will be required. The other triggers that we changed were we raised it from 500 to 1,000 square feet. So if you're doing a remodel or an addition of a structure, it would be 1,000 square feet would trigger the ordinance instead of 500. And then raising that 50,000 to 100,000 total project valuation is what now triggers the ordinance. Then for hard surface, or when I say hard surface, I mean just basically parking lots, asphalt, concrete, gravel. We went from 5,000 to 10,000 square feet. That's the point at where landscaping's required interior to the hard surface versus perimeter planting, and so we increased that to 10,000 square feet. And then also, where the 20% or more of an improved lot or parcel's been landscaped, such lot or parcel shall be exempt from the requirements. You know, that was, you know, really based off of Shriver's lot, since that is who came to us and inquired for some of these changes to be made, so it was really based off of his lot. So if, you know, if you've got over 35,000 square feet of hard surface, that's exempt from, you know, not having to put anything into your parking lot, so if that makes sense. Really, it hasn't come into play that much since those 2013 revisions, but it is in there. Our current requirements, so if you do new construction, that would trigger the landscape ordinance. Remodels valuing over $100,000 triggers the ordinance. And hard surface reconstruction, so that would be redoing a parking lot, resurfacing or digging it all up and totally redoing. If that's over $100,000, that triggers the landscape ordinance. Remodels are subject to only spend up to 10% of their total project cost on landscaping, so basically what that means is, you know, if you're doing a $100,000 project, we're not gonna make you come into full compliance. It's, you would just spend 10% of that total project cost on, you know, what can that give you for landscaping. Hard surface requirements is one tree and two shrubs for 2,500 square feet of hard surface, and 10,000 square feet or more of hard surface requires the trees to be put interior to the lot versus perimeter. And, yeah, so. Boulevard requirement is fairly simple. If you build a new home, like I said before, then we'll require one tree per every 35 to 40 square, or 35 to 40 feet. So those trees are paid upfront when the building permit's pulled, so we order the trees, we bring them in. That's really the only time the homeowner or the builder has to deal with the boulevard We do have an appeal process. Since 2008, we've had 10 written appeals. Eight of those 10 were approved, two were denied. Mainly those two had requested a complete waiver of all landscaping, and so that's why those two were denied, but the other eight of the 10 were approved. Mainly, a lot of those approvals are, you know, for projects like the picture you see on the slide, it's for either auto lots, trucking lots. We've done requests from wind turbine plants, so we've worked with all these guys as well for, basically, parking lots or hard surface areas that aren't parking lots, they're for moving trucks, semis, farm equipment, wind turbines, things like that, where it would be impractical to have interior landscaping. Concerns that are brought up, you know, frequently are snow removal on our bad winters, when we do get snows like last winter. If you don't mark the planter edges or corners, it is, it can make plowing more difficult. Most businesses have got into putting some sort of placement markers out there for the snow plows to be able to see the edging or the curbing. And so that's the best way that they found for marking those out for snow removal. And then the planter shapes and designs where you're putting it versus where you're piling the snow. I mean, there's just a lot of variables, and we work with all of those businesses to make sure that, you know, whatever's designed or whatever's on paper's gonna work for them as well. Truck traffic, here again, that's always a concern. The picture I included is Magnum Truck. All their trees went to the perimeter mainly because it's all semi-traffic maneuvering through that lot. And we've done it with various other ones. I've included just a few of them on here. Speedy, Harmorders, Automax, Titan Machinery. Landscape plans, though, we do require landscape plans for every building permit. It basically makes sure that I'm in the same line as the builder, as the designer and the owner. The example I included on here was Lewis Drug, which was just finished up. That lot is just a hair over 10,000 square feet. It required four trees and eight shrubs, which did bring it into full compliance, and so there would be no additional landscaping required in the future. The layout and design is mostly up to the owner and the landscape designer. We work with them if there's issues that where it wouldn't be compliant with the ordinance, but for the most part, the owner and the designer work on where the placements of these planters and trees will go so it best benefits their parking lot or how their business operates. Another landscape plan is the Aveira Parking Lot behind Kessler's, which was done a few years ago. This is a 60,000 square foot hard surface area, which called for 24 trees, 48 plants. Here again, this one is fully compliant, so no additional landscaping's needed in the future for any reason. This is right behind, to the east of Kessler's, where the home, what was it, a home health building, the old Aveira Lot, yep. Here again, the layout of the trees and the planters is a lot of times up to the owners. They decided to go with one long island, which does make it much easier to move snow and deal with some of those concerns in the wintertime. But, you know, there's a lot of variables. You can do peninsula planters, corner planters, shorter planters, you know, single, or I should say, single tree planters instead of do double or more trees per planter. So it's really dependent on the lot, the makeup of the lot. Every lot is different in size and shape, so what you do on one lot, you necessarily can't do on the next. Another remodel example would be the O'Reilly's to the DeVita Building. That was around $770,000, 15,000 square feet of hard surface, which called for six trees and 12 plants. That one is fully compliant now. And they, I think they had one tree on their site, original tree that was, we were able to include, so. The Blockbuster to Caribou Verizon, that was a 10,000 square foot hard surface area, $300,000 project, which called for three trees, six plants. And here again, we, on the landscape plan, you know, we worked with them on tree species and things like that for their signage.
So question, I mean, I'm writing down these projects, but just, let's talk about it right now. So $300,000 remodel project, how much would the landscape portion of this be? How much do they, you know, for the curb and gutter, for the trees? How much did that cost them?
Oh, you know, we've kinda come up with an average over the last 10, 13 years. If you're gonna, for a remodel project where you're having to cut out concrete or asphalt and then install concrete curb and gutter along with the new soil and plant material, it averages about $10,000 per planter. And so if you're gonna do a $300,000 project, that would be your three planters is basically what, where we've, because it would be too difficult to, you know, have them come to me with quotes from a contractor to do this, so we've kinda figured out over time that it's about $10,000 per planter to have them installed.
And Aaron, with this example that's on the screen, currently Caribou Coffee, those are considered to be within the parking lot themselves, the way that that is?
Um, this one was a little tricky because it is 10,000 square feet, or it might even be a hair under, so it wouldn't be required interior, but there's nowhere else to put them. You know, there's no perimeter, and so on sites like this, we just have to work with unused areas, whether it's, you know, a hashed out half a parking stall or something like that. We basically, we're under the sign and do an ornamental. We work with these, with businesses like this that don't have perimeters, just to find, you know, an unused portion of the lot that they could put the trees.
That's right. And so a few slides ago where we had the DeVita location, being that it was more than 10,000 feet, that should've all been interior, but they received an exception, or how did they, how were they allowed to do perimeter trees?
Yeah, most, every project that we work on, a majority of the trees go interior, but we always allow them to put at least one or two trees perimeter.
And then, not to interrupt, but explain the process for receiving those exceptions.
For the exceptions of the...
When DeVita, for instance, came to you and said, "We haven't got the space to do all interior trees."
Well, it's not necessarily the space, because they can put, they could put planters in, but since we started doing this 13 years ago, we've always, we've always looked at it as a majority of the trees go interior, and I think the ordinance used to say majority, and we just always kept it that way. So a majority of the trees go interior, but we'll allow one to two trees to go out because sometimes we do have existing trees that are already on the perimeter, which we will give them credit for, as long as it's close enough to the hard surface where it actually is benefiting either aesthetics or shading the asphalt.
Aaron, do you score the trees? If there's an existing tree there that's, you know, a fully grown tree, is that worth more than, say, a new tree newly planted?
Uh-uh, we don't. If it's a, if it's a tree we feel is benefiting the site, you know, in one way or another, whether it's beautifying the site or is visible, we'll give them credit for that tree.
Please resume.
All right.
Sorry for the interruption.
No problem. This is just to give perspective. If you look at a city block that's around 90,000 square feet, which, if you looked at one tree, our requirements would be one tree for every 2,500 square feet of paved service, that'd be 36 trees, 72 plants. The New Life Fellowship Parking Lot is really close to a block size. This is just to kinda give you an idea of how many trees would be really required for a site the size of a block. The New Life has 20, right now they already have 20 of the 42 required trees. Their landscape plan, which is on this slide, shows you what it would look like if it was fully compliant. And here again, there were some existing trees on site that we do give them credit for. I mean, they're nice trees that were, they're not like volunteer trees or anything like that. They were actually planted by a landscaper. And we do, here again, we take into consideration the amount of hard surface used for maneuvering, loading, and unloading, and that kinda brings us back to why we allow a couple trees to be put on the perimeters, because we're including in that hard surface count maneuvering, the driving lanes, the unloading, loading lanes, and so instead of looking at putting all of the required trees interior to the hard surface, that's why we always allowed a couple to be put on the perimeter, just because we're taking into consideration those maneuvering areas of hard surface.
So are they gonna be required to put more trees in here?
Uh, into the New Life? Into this one?
Yes.
Only if they were to trigger the ordinance again, if they were to do a project over $100,000, yep. And they've, we've had, I think, two or three projects with them, so this slide kinda shows you what it looks like now. That's over, I think, two or three projects, yep.
And the primary reason for that is, is a 10% rule?
Yep, yep, exactly.
So they're not fully compliant, but they are compliant with what they've done so far?
Yes, yep, correct.
So was that, going back to Caribou Coffee, was that pretty close to the 10%?
Well, if they did another $100,000 project, we'd have one more tree required, but I'm not sure where we'd put it. So that'd be one where we may be going to the Forestry Committee for an appeal, yep. The next set of slides just shows what a lot of our projects looked like before we had a landscape ordinance. Most of these projects, you know, they didn't take landscaping into consideration at all where there is opportunity. And here again, these are all pre-landscape ordinance, so pre-2006. A lot of the landscaping, you know, that, a lot of what would be done now is just to help beautify these parts of town and add curb appeal and aesthetics. This site here, St. Mark's, that's one that actually, pre-2000...
St. Paul's.
Pardon me?
St. Paul's.
Or St. Paul's, I'm sorry. St. Paul's, pre-2013, that would've actually had to have some landscaping put in it, but since we raised the valuation to, from 50 to $100,000 parking lot reconstruction, they were able to reconstruct their parking lot without adding any type of vegetation to it. So that was one that did get missed out. The next set of slides show what a lot of the projects that we've done over the last 13 years. Rick's Heating and Cooling, he does have some other trees on this site as well that are on the perimeter, and that was due to the, you know, the garage doors on the other side where it's a lot of just trucks coming and going. Boys and Girls Club, Matchbox, which just finished up. Some, a lot of the apartment complexes. This is one of the earlier ones with more mature vegetation. Some of these next slides just kinda show before and after pictures, what they looked like before and what they looked like after. This is the old Deluxe Site, where they had to do some new boulevard, turn all that rock into grass, and add a planter in the parking lot. The Kmart Project, which we're all familiar with, that turned into Runnings, which we really, I think, improved the appeal of that lot. So, yeah, that's my presentation, and if any of you have questions, I'll be happy to try and answer.
So am I misunderstanding the 10% of, I mean, if the value of the project is $300,000, so if they spend over $30,000, they're not required to do any?
They're not, they wouldn't be required to spend over $30,000 in landscaping.
Okay. They have to spend up to that amount.
Right, so, yeah.
Aaron, one of the complaints I've heard is, if you're pulling out, I think the example they gave me was coming out of Lang's Audio, and there's trees in the boulevard right there, and it can be hard for the driver who's turning to see oncoming traffic.
Okay.
Is there any consideration given to safety?
Well, there are, and, you know, most of the time, we would've done tall growing trees in that area, but because of the power lines, we did trees that we could try to trim up as high as we could, but the ornamentals make it a little more difficult, so. But we do, and that's just one site that, until those trees get tall enough, it's hard to keep them trimmed up. But I haven't had, I guess, any complaints from that one that I know of, so. But we do go out and, you know, since they are in the right of way, we would trim those up to help out people coming and going from those businesses, yep.
So would you be opposed to an exception for industrial park development, given that a majority of the purpose of this is to, for beautification and so forth? Kind of explain the value of having a bunch of trees in a place for manufacturing and so forth.
Well, I guess, yeah, I guess, I don't know how to answer that. I think it's good to beautify all our areas of town, and so industrial park gets a lot of visitors from out of town. You know, and here again, I think all of those were perimeter planting, so it's not like we're, you know, going into the parking lots, but I think it's important that we, you know, beautify our industrial park, just like any other part of town. So that, that's my opinion, but, so.
Appreciate it.
As far as trees, I remember when we had the air cooler, what do they call it, at Central. One of the first things they did was they planted trees and all that around it, because trees do absorb sound.
They do.
And...
Not enough.
Not enough, no. It still had, still had problems, and they had to build another wall, but that was one of the first things that was actually recommended to try, was, hey, plant some trees because it'll deflect and absorb the noise. And so when I sit there and look at industrial areas, if they can plant around the perimeter, especially if they're with any distance of some residential, perimeter trees might actually be a benefit to keep the noise down.
Oh, yeah, keep the noise and lights, a lot of the reflection from the lights at night, too. It helps deflect a lot of that light from your shooting back up in the sky as well. But, you know, we've looked at trees, the beef plant looked at trees for, around their lagoons to help with the odor, to help trap some of the odors coming out. So there's, there are other purposes that trees can be useful for.
Take a lot of pine trees to do that.
Yeah.
Aaron, how common is the 10% of project cost requirement bound in other South Dakota municipalities? Is it, is there something like it? Is the 10% common?
Not that I'm aware of, not that I'm...
Are we unique in having it?
We're unique in how we're beautifying our community, no doubt about it, yep.
And prior to 2004, when we began to organize and craft our existing ordinance, was the template for our existing one completely native and original here, or was the template somewhere else that we liked?
The 2006 one?
Or six, if you want, yeah.
The 2000, the original 2006 was a company, and I wasn't here when it was first hired out, but I think it was a Texas company. Ken, you were around then. I think it was a Texas company that developed that plan.
Wasn't that developed with all their ordinances when they went through the rewrite?
Okay.
Okay. Which, your question was, are other communities...
The development?
Identical.
Master plan?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And he said that none in the state...
Yeah. It came out of the comp plan when Walmart was coming.
Okay. Did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
So one of the other concerns that I've gotten is that people that are doing commercial building projects sometimes feel that the approval process is, elongates the, you know, from time to build, I guess. And, so could you tell us a little bit about what does the approval process look like for a company building commercial in Aberdeen?
As long as I get a landscape plan that meets the specifications of the ordinance, it's a quick email to Ken or, you know, any of the other guys at Planning and Zoning to say landscape's approved, and I know they have other approvals they wait on as well, but normally, unless a company comes in that, you know, dropped the ball and didn't do any planning for landscaping, it's a 10-minute deal, you know?
So the process, they would go upstairs here, and they would give that to Ken, who would email you?
Yep, or they just come over to my office with their plan, we look it over. If there's modifications, we can make it. I can sign off on it there and shoot the email over, or make a phone call, and it's approved, yep. So it's, the only ones like... So it's, the only ones, like I say, that do get held up, or if they come in with no plan, they haven't talked to anybody, they don't know the ordinance, they don't know the requirements, those are the ones that do get, can get held up, yeah.
And then what does it look like when a building project is completed? How do you make sure that those, uh, those have come into compliance?
The, usually planning and zoning gives me a call and says this, they're looking for their certificate of occupancy or their temporary CO, and I'll go inspect the property with the plan and, and make sure that, you know, the, the, the trees are in, the plants are in, the planters are where they said they were going to be, so. Here again, that's usually it, within a day I can get them approval on that.
And you physically go out and check those and so forth?
Yeah.
Has anyone other questions for Aaron while he's here?
I would just ask why you're here, if you could give us an update on the Emerald Ash Bore.
Ooh, the Emerald Ash Bore, well, it, it's not any closer that we know of, so it's in Sioux Falls, obviously, they're, it's spreading throughout Sioux Falls, uh, slowly, uh, you know, they're, they're doing a few studies to, you know, see, uh, especially with their chemical applicators, they're actually testing the amount of chemical in trees to make sure that the people out treating are, are putting enough chemical in to actually kill the insect, um, they're finding good results with that, so, um, they're, I know they're still vigilant about, uh, when the trees can be cut down, when they can be removed, and so I know that's helping considerably with the amount of spread that's actually happening from, you know, the north part of Sioux Falls to the south, so. Uh, other than that, not a whole lot of news, which is good for us, uh, that it hasn't been found any closer, um, you know, so it's, at this point, it's kind of, if we get calls, we'll, I'll go out and check trees to make sure there's, you know, it isn't Emerald Ash Bore, but we're just, we do set traps up as well in the summertime to monitor for, uh, adult activity, so, but we haven't found anything, so we're in good shape for now. Uh, we are cutting a few more trees down, but, uh, you know, it's, it's marginal ash trees that we don't want to spend time trimming on, they're trees that just need to come down, so those are the ones we're marking, uh, and taking out, but, uh, that's kind of where we're at right now with Emerald Ash Bore, so.
Councilman Bunson's had another question for you.
So I'm trying to remember the two lots that the city did, one behind the Mel Chow, uh, building and, um, US, um, West Lot.
Mm-hmm.
I thought that those were well over a hundred thousand dollars cost, and I'm, I'm trying to think of how St. Paul's Lutheran got below-
Yeah, they're-
The hundred thousand, are we not getting the same pricing as?
Oil prices were low that year.
Well, we have a, I can weigh in on this, so, that is, I don't know if you call it a bug or, or, or a feature, but, uh, some of, some of the, uh, property owners are able to do a lot of it themselves without necessarily engaging a contractor. Um, in that instance, then, it's, it's, there's nothing showing that the, that the dollar amount was over the hundred thousand dollars, so that was one of those scenarios, I believe.
Okay.
I sure hope you're not implying that St. Paul's Lutheran was being dishonest.
No, I'm just saying that they were able to, they have a lot of people, yeah, a lot of people were able to help out, and so that the actual cost was not, did not meet the threshold, that's how they, they, they did not trigger it.
And Aaron, you had said, uh, to give some perspective, when pounders, they, they fell beneath the range by a significant amount, did they not, with?
Uh, which one, pounder?
Pounders had re-asphalated this summer.
Oh, yeah, 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 they were, oh, I have to think about that, but yes, they would've been under, under a hundred thousand dollars, yes.
Sounds good, thanks for coming in, Aaron.
Thank you.
Good information. Next, we will move to old business, first order of business is ordinance 190903, ordinance amending the City Code Regarding Conflict of Interest Prohibited Activities of Council Members, final adoption of ordinance, 190903 as amended. Ron, lead us up.
Hi, excuse me, I'm sorry, I have a, oops, I need to get on-
I'll, I'll move third reading.
Who's got something to add to this conversation? If not, I've got a proposed amendment that I would like to make, and I've got some rationale as it relates to that. Um, one of the segments in which we're brought to, uh, to, I guess, plead our case for being able to do business with these entities, um, was worded in such way that I thought was unfair. Uh, circumstances on which the City Council may authorize is what currently changes, and if you look at on your screen, I think that language should, uh, be rewritten to, uh, include the word "shall." Now, I do think that it's reasonable that the City Council look into these matters and take a look and see, are these fair, are they reasonable, are they contrary to public interest, but I think that the language "shall" definitely puts forward the implication that we've got, um, an entire court system predicated on the presumption of innocence. I think that we should mirror that in our activities here, and I think that we should give the entities that are, that we're trusting with this money the benefit of the doubt in saying that we trust their decisions are unbiased and reasonable as they have been in my case for twelve years running, and I don't think that, um, that it's unreasonable to say these projects shall be authorized unless the council has reason to believe they're not fair, versus saying that they may be authorized based on whatever decision that , uh, the City Council may put forward. So I think, you know, by and large, it's a very minor, uh, change, but it really keeps with the spirit of presumption of innocence in our country, and it also allows these entities, that we show them that, uh, that we trust that they're making fair and biased decisions, as we've all said in the very first of these meetings when we began to discuss this issue.
Ron, do you have any comments on that? Um, just as a matter of drafting, I will point out to the council that, uh, the, the language as it was placed into the ordinance and approved at second reading is identical to the language used in the statute, which is three dash twenty-three dash eight, which says, uh, uses the word "may" instead of "shall." What I would, what I would, uh, add on this is that if the council is inclined to make it a mandatory authorization, then the only change that would be necessary would be in, in the prefatory language here, I'll start circling it with my cursor, basically that should, if you were to just change the one word from "may" to "shall," um, and leave nothing, and change nothing else, it would accomplish, I believe, what, what Mayor Shoneman is wanting, which is, uh, a requirement that the authorization be given if it satisfies these conditions, the conditions would be full written disclosure, and then in B, the conditions would have to be that the terms of the contract are fair, reasonable, and not contrary to the public interest, if the, if the, uh, that would be the only, uh, clarification I would make, that you don't need to make, make the changes in B if the council were to make the change, uh, from "may" to "shall."
I just wanted it very clear to the council members here that they would still have a say, they would still get full disclosure, they would still be able to stop a contract in which was not fair or reasonable, or was contrary to public interest, which is, we were promised up and down, this is all about disclosure, this is about making sure the contracts are fair, and I think that disclosure, and I think that, uh, visibility on these issues is important, but I, I think that it should be the council's requirement to prove that something is not fair versus the other way around. We have a country that was predicated on the presumption of innocence, and I don't think that a court system made up of City Council members should be any different. Anyone have any comments on that, otherwise I will make a motion myself to, uh, to adopt that language, can I get a second?
I, I don't know that I'm that comfortable with that, uh, just because there can always be circumstances involved, um, that, you know, aren't clear in, in the ordinance. There could be situations where, I, I, you know, you just never know what those circumstances might be, and, and I would like the latitude, uh, of the word "may."
So give me an example of a situation that you could potentially foresee being an issue.
I, I can't give you an example right now until it's presented before us.
So you can think of an example which wouldn't be fair, unfair, wouldn't be unreasonable, or wouldn't be contrary to public interest, something besides those things would cause you to want to put the halt to a contract?
Well, you just never know, uh, that's all I'm saying, is, you know, things may become involved, and, uh, I, I, I would just think that we should have the latitude, uh, to consider all factors, and I personally like the word "may," but that's my opinion.
I think, uh, I'm, I agree with Mike, I, I have a hard time, um, with "shall." Both of us have dealt with criminal law, uh, pretty much most of our careers, and, uh, "shall" becomes a, you, you kind of tie your hands, uh, "may" gives us a little bit of leeway, that doesn't mean we're not going to be fair about it, it's just that it gives us a little leeway, gives us a little latitude in case there are things that pop up that we can't think of today or haven't happened today, uh, someday they may pop up and now we're, we have zero latitude, um, or very little latitude, I, I, and it's just coming from my experience that "shall" is a, is a hand-tying, uh, word, and I'm uncomfortable with it myself.
Councilman Roni?
I would echo those sentiments. I think the, uh, the attempt here is to, is to make it a presumption that if somebody comes, comes to us, uh, and wants to enter into a, into a contract, that we are going to approve it, that it becomes a presumption, and I think, um, quite honestly for myself, I think, uh, this is a discretion that should be, uh, rarely used by the council, I don't know how we would ever provide oversight, you know, that's one of our jobs, is to see how our money is being spent. You know, a few months ago, uh, we contracted with a, with a, a law firm to provide, uh, some legal services, uh, to the city. I, of course, uh, didn't bid on it, and I don't think it would've been proper, but if I had bid on it and had I been given the opportunity to, to do that, who, who would've been able to provide oversight as to whether, whether my, um, the bill that I sent, uh, was reasonable, uh, you know, Lynn is going to be in a terrible position when he tells me that I'm overcharging him. Ron is going to be in a terrible position if he tells me that I'm overcharging him, you know, um, part of our job is to make sure that the ci, that the city's money is spent fairly, uh, I am going to be, um, it, it's going to be hard for me to ever find that, uh, that the public interest is served by allowing one of us to, uh, to provide those kinds of services, uh, to the city of Aberdeen. I don't think the word "shall" belongs-
And you'd, you'd also agree that that extends to the Chamber, the Convention and Visitors Bureau?
I am aware of how the statute reads, yes, sir.
Have you personally done work for the Convention and Visitors Bureau since you've been a council member?
No.
You've not?
Convention and Visitor-
Have you done work for the Development Corporation?
As you know, I have.
Interrupt here, I mean, we don't even have a motion on the floor, did you make a motion, Mayor? Did you make a motion?
I did, yes.
Well, as a, then I would make a point of, of parliamentary procedure, I, as a presiding officer, I don't believe the presiding officer is, is in a position to make a motion.
I was told by Ron that he was.
So if I, if I can weigh in on this, um-
Sure.
I, I do not in any way, uh, deign to, to believe that I'm an expert in Robert's Rules, however, um, what I see from Robert's Rules is that this body of, of less than twelve would be considered a small governing body, and therefore the presiding officer can make motions for a small governing body.
And I'll accept that.
Ron, I guess my question would be kind of for you, I'm, I'm just reading here, it says the, um-
Did we have a second on the motion?
We did not.
Well, I have a question, uh, prior, if, so if, if we change the word from "may" to "shall," does that, it does, and then we still include the part of the council deems, whoop. I'm sorry, let me, let me go to the, to the current language, just so we're all looking at the same thing, okay, I'll switch back, okay. Sure, so, and, and then this council still deems that the contract is fair, that it's reasonable, and we address the public interest part, um, I guess I'm wondering what, talk about the significance of that change from "shall" to "may," with section B still included. I almost need to use an analogy to make that clearer. I was involved many years ago in a case where a judge was presented with, with, um, a set of facts and, and the law as, as he understood it required him to, uh, deny a particular motion that, that the defense was making. He was very uncomfortable in having to deny it because it was clear to him that this was not right, was not in the interests, um, of, of criminal justice to, to have to deny that motion, but because of the requirement, the, the "shall" language, he had to deny it, um, and that's, that's the only change. If, if the council were in a position where, where under this, uh, the, the council member who was asking for the, uh, authorization was able to satisfy all of these, this would say that the council has to then approve that, even though, um, members of the council might feel uncomfortable, might still have reservations about it, uh, they would be required to approve that, that's all I can say. So as, if, if we left it at "may," then you could deny a request for any reason you wanted to, correct? The, the officials, the officials could, could individually, yes, that's true, yeah. So I'm just, I just put up, by contrast, I put up the "may" language that you're looking at in the ordinance approved at second reading, um, to show that, um, the council's given that discretion at the end of all of this to still ultimately decide not to approve, not to authorize versus the "shall" language, and again, I, I do want to point out that if, um, I don't know if the mayor's motion is to, to make the change that we're seeing here, or if it's simply just to change "may" to "shall" and not make the change in subsection B.
My, my thing with this is, we do that every time we vote on something, we vote based on the facts, the situations, our beliefs, everything about it. And to me, we judge our own qualifications as a board, uh, city officials don't, um, you know, maybe the attorney can help us in situations, but we as a board are responsible to judge the qualifications of ourselves, and this is no different in this circumstance, by saying we have to approve something if it meets these requirements, there may be something else that may be held back, but it makes us do our work to make sure that, yes, it is in the best interest of the public, yes, it is to the bu, uh, benefit of everyone involved, that it does meet those standards, it makes us do the work by putting the word "may" in there, because we have to justify our vote and our decision.
Clint, I'd argue the opposite, I'd say it makes you do your job if it says "shall," because then you have to prove that it's unfair, whereas now it can be for any reason, a personal bias.
But I'd rather, I'm a, I'm a optimist, I'd rather prove that it's fair.
Right, then it should be the word "shall," and then it would put the onus on the council to prove that something is unfair, just like the court system has to prove you're guilty, they can't just go into it and say you're guilty unless you prove otherwise.
This is hard for me, I know it's probably kind of a moot point, you know, the way, it, it, whether I second or not, but, uh, part of my issue that I had with the conflict of interest ordinance from the beginning is it makes it difficult for people to run for city office, people who are small business owners or people who do happen to have some business with the city. Some of these races that we have go unopposed, and I, I think that's a problem, we should make it easier for people to run for city council, and, and the only thing in my head, and I'd like feedback on this, the, the "shall" would make it so if I'm a business owner and I say, um, I'm going to run for city council, and I, and I know that what I'm doing is fair and reasonable and not contr, contrary to the public interest, it kind of gives you some bit of, um, confidence that you can continue doing your business as a city council person, as long as you follow all the disclosure rules, and that's why I'm leaning, you know, towards a, a, the second emotion, and I want to get your feedback on this, saying, as a business owner, um, if you run a successful small business, my guess is you're probably a, a good leader, and as a good leader, we'd want you to be able to run for city office.
And, and I don't think any of this precludes anyone, basically it is, is letting us know ahead of time, this ordinance tells you exactly what is a conflict, what isn't, so you, as someone wanting to run for city council, knows, okay, I'm going to have these conflicts of interest, it then tells you what you need to do to remedy them, so then we are working together as a body to help you be successful, and you're letting us know that you have these conflicts, I don't think it precludes anyone from running for office, it may ju- It may just be a little more work for them. And it may be a little more work for us, too. And there's nothing wrong with that.
This is an unproven system at this stage in the game. We could... 100% of these could be denied, for all we know. We won't know until they start... The rubber hits the road.
There are seven school board members that have to follow this. They've had to follow it since 2017. Seven school board members in the city of Aberdeen that fall under this same language. And so I don't see that that's been an issue for the Aberdeen School District.
But a lot fewer entities do business with the school board than with the city. And now we're expanding it to be entities outside of the city itself to include...
I don't think it's a lot. The Aberdeen School District budget is a very sizable budget. Maybe it's not to the level of the city of Aberdeen, but it's a sizable budget, and they do a lot of business with a lot of vendors. So...
If they expanded the language of the school board's regulations to include all the businesses that the school board does...
I think the language in the state law already does it. We just have clarified it a little bit. I don't... I mean, they can be removed from the office. We don't have that language in this particular ordinance. That's one of the big... I mean, it's an automatic.
What I'm saying is, the school board's regulations are limited to the businesses doing business directly with the school. Now imagine if they expanded that like we've done here.
I don't believe it's limited to the businesses that do business just with the school district. I think it's contracts because that's exactly what happened in 2016 or 2015 with GEAR Up. It wasn't a department-level state, South Dakota state, that was the infraction. It was something that a contract went out to a nonprofit that created more nonprofits. You know, it was money that was leaving the state. That's what they were trying to address. That's exactly what we're trying to address here, too. It's just said a little differently.
GEAR Up was already illegal business practice.
That doesn't... I've heard that, and that doesn't... I mean, so...
So you don't need to make something more illegal than this, right?
You know, you can throw analogies out there all you want or, you know, scenarios. But that's not an argument for this... Against this particular ordinance because something's illegal. Because you can come up with a lot of things that are illegal. And if we just took away some other piece, it just doesn't make sense. Again, school districts have to follow this ordinance. And that means money that is spent within... People that are directly doing business or money that leaves the school district for contractual issues.
So if the school district does a parking lot through Lean's Transportation, you, as a school board member, cannot do business with Lean's Transportation?
I don't think that's what the ordinance says.
That was my argument, and that's the argument... That's what we're running into here, though. That's what I'm discussing. The school board regulations are limited to the school's expenditures. This goes beyond that.
No, the school board regulations include money that leaves. If they send... If they expend dollars, if they hire... If they were to grant someone money, I think that is covered by 3-20 whatever, 23. I think it's... I think there's a lot of similarities between ours and what school boards have to do. I really do believe that. Because why did the state come up with that? Because of GEAR Up. And that was not a department within the state of South Dakota. It was money that was leaving the state. They grant... They gave money to an organization. The Department of Education granted money to another organization.
I believe that we got federal funds in this state. The GEAR Up members were South Dakota state employees.
I think we can agree that...
I don't think they were South Dakota employees.
I think we can agree that GEAR Up was probably... When you had certain other people taking money from other school districts and other boards was probably conflicted all over the place on numerous levels. You know, no different than the EB5 where you had someone at the state before he left grant a bunch of money to a different company, which then he was going to go do work for. Probably, you know, may have been legal, probably wasn't right. And even if it was illegal, shouldn't have been done anyway. But someone was still able to do it and fall under the radar. So this is the type of stuff that we're hoping to prevent. And it is all about... And we can get into the every detail. The thing is, is it's going to make us think a little bit about what is a conflict, what isn't a conflict, and how are we going to remedy that conflict? And it's here in the ordinance that we have. And that's probably the biggest thing is the public disclosure, that, yes, I may have a conflict. And if I have a conflict and I'm not going to remedy it, here's what I have to do. I have to abstain from voting, and I can't discuss the matter in that type of setting.
But that's already a rule.
It already is. But that's what I'm saying. This is just tightening up and meeting the requirements of the charter that we have to do anyway. We have to meet the strictest standard of the state. And I'm with Dave. I have to... You read state law, and when it says "shall," you're hamstrung. And same thing with Mike. You're hamstrung. You have no choice.
So I think we've had a lot of discussion without a second.
Yeah.
Sure.
Oh, excuse me. So the process would be, if there's a second, we'll vote on this motion?
Second, then we could have more discussion and then vote.
I will second. And the reason that goes back to what I had said earlier. I think it clarifies for the person who may potentially be... Have some future conflicts as a city council member to say, if I follow all these things and I do all these things, then it will be... I'll be allowed to do it. Versus, I could follow all these rules and check all the boxes, and then I still might not be able to continue my doing what I'm doing. So that's my reasoning for making the second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Nay.
Nay. Motion is defeated. Any other discussion before we just place this possible adoption vote, I guess, in place? I continue to believe this is targeted legislation. I think it's unnecessary legislation. I think we're well-covered by the state's regulations and rules. But I understand that I'm not in the majority with that opinion. So Carl, give us a roll call vote.
Councilmember Remley?
We're voting on third reading.
Voting on the...
Okay.
Aye.
Yeah, we had a motion.
And Rob seconded. Councilmember Ronan?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Rife?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Bunsonus?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Rux?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
No. Motion does carry. Next, we'll talk about ordinance 191001, ordinance to rezone from C1R4 districts to R2 district for Lot 1, Block 37, Thomas addition to the Aberdeen in the northwest quarter of the Section 24, T123R64W of the 5th PM Brown County, South Dakota. Possible second reading and final adoption. Kenny, you've got any information for us on that? Motion from Bunsonus and a second for Ronan. Carl, would you give us a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Rux?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Bunsonus?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Rife?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Ronan?
Aye.
Remley?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
Aye. Motion does carry. Next, we've got the consent calendar, possible approval of routine city business items A through F. There has been a change to what you've seen listed in your document. There will be a further discussion on residential building contractor license for Mr. Silas Wilson, which we'll remove from this vote and discuss at a future time. Can I get a motion to approve the remaining consent calendar items?
So moved.
So seconded.
And a motion from Rux and a second from Ronan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion does carry. Consent calendar is approved. Next, we've got... I'm sorry. What are you sorry about?
I was not paying attention.
Behind. Oh. Forgive you this time. New business, Resolution 191005R, Resolution authorizing the Parks, Rec, and Forestry Department to apply for land and water conservation grant for construction of three pickleball courts in Manor Park. Possible approval of resolution. Doug, you're here to talk about that?
Yes.
Pickleball.
About this time last year, we did apply for a grant. Council approved submitting a grant for this project. Unfortunately, the project was not approved at the state level, and there's another round of funding that has been approved. And we would request authorization to resubmit that grant. And pickleball continues to grow. Last year, I know I brought some people with me to lobby for the grant, and they continue to play on a regular basis. So if you would approve this, we'll get that grant submitted, and hopefully we'll have better luck this year.
Move approval.
Second.
And a motion from Bunsonus and a second from Johnson. All in favor? For that approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Congratulations. Doug, you have the approval. Good luck.
I might say, too, I don't know if I'll be before the council again, but I am retiring November 22nd. And I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank the new Mayor Shawman, Councilman, all the mayors and council people I've had the pleasure of working with during my tenure as director. And, you know, I guess I'm extremely proud of what we've accomplished as a department. And it's really been an honor and a privilege for me to serve. And I've been very fortunate to have a lot of loyal and dedicated staff over the years that I've worked with. And certainly been a team effort in all that we've accomplished. And I know, too, I need to thank other city departments, police department, fire department, public works, finance, computer, up and down the list. Because certainly, we couldn't do what we do without the support of a lot of city departments. So again, I'm going to miss my job. I love what I do, but I guess it's time. So thank you very much.
Well, on behalf of those of us up here, we're very, very thankful. And I've often said this is the best place in the state to raise a family, largely due to the things that children can do around here, parks and trails and some of the top-notch activities we've got to offer through your department.
You bet.
I think...
It wouldn't happen without your support.
I think Lynn should schedule you for November 18th.
I'll second.
Get you back here.
Thanks, Doug.
Thank you. Tearful hugs. Get him out of the way now. He's not coming back. Thanks again, Doug. Next, we've got recommendation on bids for the Aberdeen groundwater supply and expansion soil borings for the hydrogeologic investigation project. Possible approval to award the bid to Trump Companies in the amount of $98,600 and to approve the city manager and finance officer to sign all necessary documents after approval. Bob, tell us a little bit about that.
What this is going to do will be anywhere from 10 to 15 soil borings, looking for potential sources for new ground wells to provide water for the city.
Move to approve. Second.
Is anyone any questions for Bob while he sits?
I've got one, if I may, Mayor. You know, I noticed that the engineer's estimate is substantially less than the bids. Are you... Is there a reason that you're okay with that?
They basically... They base their estimate on what they thought was going to be the past numbers that have worked out. But I guess, depending on how busy the companies are, we also are making sure that they don't do any damage to the private property that we're going to be on. So they have to work around those conditions. So we have to wait till it's frozen so we don't... The mud, we don't want to make marks everywhere. So... But I know it depends on how busy the well drillers are. The high bid, they're... They used to be cheaper in the past. But they're not that... They must be fairly busy right now.
Thank you, Bob.
Any other questions? Or was I think Bunsonus, did you have the motion to approve that? And the second was someone over here also.
Oh, did Mark made the motion. I had made the second.
Got it. So we've got a motion from Mark Remley and a second from Dave Bunsonus. All in favor... Or actually, it's a paid one. Carl, give us a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Remley?
Aye.
Ronan?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Rife?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Bunsonus?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Rux?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
Aye. Motion does carry. Thank you, Bob. Next, we've got the recommendation on bid for the Aberdeen Public Safety Generator Replacement and Water Infiltration Improvement Project. Possible approval to award bid to Quest Construction in the amount of $98... Or, excuse me, $298,000 and authorize the city manager, finance officer to sign all necessary documents. Robin, tell us a little bit about that project.
Well, we've gone full circle on this. The intent originally was to try to get this done before the generator goes bad. This is a recycled generator from one of our... This is, I think, the wastewater treatment plant generator. Bottom line is, we retrofitted things. We built a building around it. And, you know, we're regretting that decision right now. We probably should have installed a brand-new generator at the time. But the generator is no longer functional. We need to get this up and running. And part of the problem for this has been the amount of groundwater that's coming in and seeping in along the east wall of the Public Safety Building. They've been very patient. What part of this project will do is, we will be digging in new drain tile above where the electrical service and some of the other perforations in the wall come into the building. We're trying to intercept that water before it gets into the building. We're also going to be redoing some of the concrete around the building and slab-jacking part of it to get it back to original elevation so we can make sure there's positive drainage away from the building. So it's an expensive deal, but without doing it, I think the... Just the switches and some of the electrical work is going for $15,000 to $20,000 a crack. And you can only sustain that for so long. We might as well invest the money. So we're asking for your approval of the project.
Move approval.
Second.
Got a motion to approve from Rux, and who was the second over here?
Mike.
Second from Mike Olson. Anyone have any questions for Robin while we're at it? Otherwise, Carl, could you give us...
Just one quick statement. The generator, the replacement of the generator... The new generator will be on the outside, just like City Hall. And so where the louvers are, we're going to have those louvers replaced and have a window put in there.
So we can see the generator? So we can see the generator?
The generator will be outside.
All right.
The generator will be outside.
Well, I'm talking about the generator that's inside now.
Carl, could you give us a roll call vote on that, please?
Councilmember Rux?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Bunsonus?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Rife?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Ronan?
Aye.
Remley?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
Aye. Motion does carry. Next, we've got the purchase of a John Deere 325G Skidsteer loader from RDO. Possible approval to purchase the Skidsteer from RDO of Aberdeen in the amount of $54,225 for the Public Works Street Department and authorize the manager and finance officer to sign all necessary documents. Robin, another one for you.
In light of some of the changes that we'll see for the downtown operation for snow removal, we're asking for an additional piece of equipment. It fits within our budget. We have not spent. We're not asking for new money, but this is something that Lynn and our department has sat down and talked about and trying to come up with the best scenario so we can make sure we're able to provide the service when we need to. So we're asking for your approval. It has been done through the Sourcewell NJPA-type process rather than going through bids, but it is a legal process.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion from Johnson, a second from Bunsonus. Any questions that anyone might have about the Skidsteer?
Robert, did you say it was in the budget? Or you have extra money?
We have money that was not expended as part of the other work, correct? So it is a non-budgeted piece of equipment that we're purchasing with money that has been budgeted.
But he cut back the acquisition so he could afford it. So, for example, they were budgeted for two tandem trucks, and they only purchased one.
Carl, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Remley?
Aye.
Ronan?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsonis.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman. Aye. Motion does carry. Next, we've got the pay request number two, street maintenance concrete repair for CWF Masonry in the amount of $45,121.32. Possible approval of pay request number two in that amount to CWF Masonry for the repair. Robin, tell us about that.
This is the ongoing drainage work that we do for... And this will be in the area that we will be doing our patch and seal work next year, but we're trying to get ahead of it so we do not create a conflict for our patching for next year. So this is just part of our normal process, and this is part of that... Those broken-up contracts that we've had several... Several contracts this year versus just the three that we had last year, so.
Move approval.
Second. Got a motion from Olson and a second from Lunsman. Does anyone have any questions about that concrete repair? Otherwise, Carl, give us a roll call vote, please. Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Bunsonis.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronane.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman. Aye. Motion does carry. Next, we've got the city's bills for the list listed in the packet from October 28, 2019.
Move approval.
Second. Got a motion from Johnson and a second from... Was it you, Josh? Second from Reif. Anyone have any questions about the bills? Otherwise, Carl, give us a roll call vote, please. Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronane.
Epstein.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsonis.
Epstein.
Olson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman. Epstein. Motion does carry. Next, we've got payroll approval for the pay period, October 13, 2019, through the 26, 2019, and the health, the city share of social security, old age, and survivor's insurance, retirement, health, and life insurance. Can I get a motion to make that payment, please?
Moved.
Second.
Got a motion for Ronane and a second from Remley. Carl, can I get a roll call vote for payroll, please? Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Bunsonis.
Epstein.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reif.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronane.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman. Aye. Motion does carry. Next, we've got city managers report. Lynn, what can you tell us?
I have no report, but I have a question for Rob, which I think you might have interest in. Do you have a specific date as to when State Street will open?
I believe it opened today.
It was open yesterday. I drove on it.
Okay.
Did you have to drive around the orange cone?
No.
Third Avenue should not be too much behind that. So it's still closed, but that will be open relatively soon. All the paving's completed. They're doing some of the landscape dirt work around it at this time.
So any predictions? You're very non-committal on the date.
December 25. I can guarantee that one.
Nothing else? Does anyone have anything to add before we move to adjourn? Move to adjourn.
Second.
Got a motion from Johnson, a second from Bunsonis. All in favor, aye.